Waiting for the clerk to announce herself, just in case someone's running. Once she does, we can proceed.
Be able to watch herself that move.
He's been in trance. That's why I'm here. That was my favorite house. I had to buy it because I was so tired. It was really nice. It was really nice. What you did about it?
Yeah, it's happened.
Killer house, not like the time they could have been on the bike path, he walked towards.
Yeah.
Right, it's perfect. The only thing I didn't like about it is massive bathroom per se.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it has small bathtub. And it was pretty much all the crap.
Uh huh.
There she is.
There we go.
You're on mute, though, Amy.
Go out and unmute her.
She can hear what I can't.
She's.
Amy, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, my goodness. Technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi.
Okay, I'll get this thing started now.
Great. Thanks for waiting. Sorry about that.
No problem. Welcome to our city council meeting. It is Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. It's five thirty six P M. And I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, please turn off all cell phones muted if you're in-house and keep yourself muted online until you're called upon, except for emergency personnel, of course. Amy, will you go ahead into our roll call?
Yes, of course. Um, Mayor Dridani.
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember Leahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrero.
Yes.
Okay.
Notice of agenda compliance per Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four. Finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at the city of Bellevue City Hall, post office, and on the city's website on January eighth, twenty twenty five.
I move that the notice for the January thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four two oh four.
Second.
All on paper?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay. Um, it's at this time. Um, I'd like to make a note to amend tonight's agenda. Um, I will be removing item number nine, the presentation. Um, and, um, on the record, I will ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. Good date, certain of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Um, our community development director is out sick and we've had just some staffing issues today. So not being able to properly receive public comment and kind of run the public hearing efficiently. We will be making that motion later in the agenda. I just wanted to give people.
Could you say what item nine is?
Item nine is a presentation for roles and responsibilities of common council. And then the other item I'm referring to is the public hearing that we're hosting at the at the end, around the P O E.
That means the text amendment.
The text amendment, yes, will be.
I see.
Yeah. Respect everybody's time and make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you.
Yes. Item two, call for conflict as outlined in Idaho Code seventy four dash four zero four. Um, any conflict with anyone on the council? Mayor and council report. Um, I'll pick us off of that. Um, just a reminder, everybody to stay healthy. Take care of yourself. Um, and, you know, stay home, out of public spaces, offices, libraries, things like that. If you are ill, have the flu, it's going around town. So just please protect yourself and protect your neighbors. Um, something of note on Friday, this Friday. Um, we sent out our first newsletter newsletter from the city of Bellevue. It's Bellevue City News that went out to a large contingency of our community. And if anyone's interested in receiving that newsletter, feel free to go onto our website to sign up. Um, that's something that we will be putting out before meetings so that our community has access to agendas. Um, it'll be filled with other forms of news from different departments, updates, interesting anecdotes as they come about, events as they happen. Um, so please sign up, engage with us and give us an opportunity to communicate more to you from City Hall. So it's kind of where I'm at with the mayor's updates. Any council updates?
It'll be.
How can you hear?
Not that long.
Wonderful. I'll move on to item four, public comment. This is for items of concern not on the agendas tonight. Um, please keep your comments limited to three to five minutes. We have no hands in City Hall. Do we see anything online, Amy? Any hands on online? Seeing that and hearing that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Item five, we're moving on to consent agenda.
I don't have anything on my end, Mayor.
Why?
Love the new public works department report, though.
Took me very surprised.
I know.
All those reading.
And with the, you know, with the government head reports, the intention will be to have reports from all departments.
Yes.
At the top of, at the top of the month for city council meetings.
Um, I see that Deputy Deputy Ross, someone from the C I T training, who will go off.
Oh, it's really poor. We have one person.
Great. That's awesome. Can you clarify what unattended death means when it's in a report?
When somebody passed away not in a hospital or under medical staff.
Just clarification on my color. Yeah, thank you.
Or nobody's present. You can be that.
It's what, what's the other?
When nobody's present.
Okay.
And. When this is looked.
Okay. Thank you. That's not my question. So this is curious about what's on last week here.
Are there no other questions or?
I need to approve. Consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Carrero.
Yes.
Councilmember Leahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff.
Yeah.
It was at this time, at this part of the meeting, I would like to say a big thank you to John and Robin um, for your time and commitment to persevere on council. Um, this is our last time together as this group. And thank you so much for your service and we really appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. So.
It's been a good journey.
Yeah.
Exciting to see what happens next. So all good stuff.
Well, I will excuse you guys. I'm commending your loyalty to stay, of course.
This year, I can, tomorrow, I can just bring it back.
Yeah, I think tomorrow will be fabulous. Thank you so much. And item six, it's time we're going to swear in our newly elected alderman. Um, Suzanne, if you'd like to join us at the table here. And we have Tammy online, who unfortunately is under the weather, but can still join us for an online swearing in. Um, our clerk, Amy, will run this swearing in from Zoom. So let's just think about. Amy, if you want to pop on.
Yeah. Oh, here. I'm here. Um, who would like to go first, I guess?
Let's do Suzanne, because she's in house and I'll, Suzanne, I'll just have you stand and.
Yeah.
Check the table.
Yeah. Raise your right hand and then Amy, go ahead and take over.
Okay, apologize in advance if I cough. I hope not. Okay. All right. I, oh, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Suzanne Reed.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And that I will do my best, I will do the best of my ability.
And that I will do the best of my ability.
To faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
To faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
In the city of Bellevue.
In the city of Bellevue.
Blaine County, Idaho, during my continuance therein.
In Blaine County, Idaho, during the continuance therein.
Sorry, it's a lot. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tammy, are you there?
I know it's. I, I am.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm gonna do any better.
I'm so sorry that you're sick. Okay, well, I'm ready if you are.
Okay, go.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Tammy Ellen Davis.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
In the city of Bellevue, Blaine County, Idaho.
In the city of Bellevue, Blaine County, Idaho.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I am standing.
Oh, good. Perfect.
Moving on to item.
You got to stare me in.
Oh, sorry. And we need to swear and just affirm.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Raise your right hand, Jessica.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Jessica Obenoff.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
In the city of Bellevue, Idaho.
In the city of Bellevue, Idaho.
Whoops, I skipped to Blaine County, but.
Blaine County. Blaine County, Idaho, during my continuance therein.
There we go. Thank you. Oh, apologize for the hiccups, but welcome to the new council members.
Thank you, Amy. Um, moving on to item number seven, this is the appointment of alderman. Um, we have a vacancy with a term expiring January twenty twenty six. Um, I did have multiple community members express interest in this seat. Um, and since early December until this week, I've been conducting interviews with the interested parties. Um, I have made a decision based on those interviews and would like to recommend longtime resident um, Tom Bergen for this position. Um, Tom would be joining us with years of experience, um, kind of at a county level, not kind of, but yes, at a county level. Um, you know, with a background in land use and interest um, in helping us in different facets, expressing an interest in park involvement and trees and all, you know, all the wonderful things that make Bellevue beautiful and thriving. So, um, I would like to put Tom forth.
I'm gonna start dinner.
I would, I would take a motion basically to bring Tom Bergen on as a council member with a term expiry in January twenty twenty six.
So moved.
You took too much.
That second is still.
I'll second it, yes.
Okay. And then, Amy, is that a roll call or a?
The roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call for that. Okay. Um, councilmember Obenoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And Tom, if you'd like to join us in a seat up here at the table. And I've got an oath ready and a packet ready for you as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. I'm gonna hand you this and we'll have you stand and raise your right hand and Amy will go ahead and swear.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Tom Bergen.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bellevue.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderman.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Alderman.
In the city of Bellevue, Blaine County, Idaho.
In the city of Bellevue, Blaine County, Idaho.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Yay.
To everyone, it was an intention to start.
I'm used to having him being here. He's been here.
Say it again.
Not used to him being here.
Yeah. Exactly. Nice for Tom to be at the table with us. Yes. Um, I was gonna mention that it was my intention to start off the year with a full, full council of six. So I look forward to having us all, um, for this next year together at the very least. Um, we'll move right along to a little more housekeeping. Um, election of a council president. We have a vacancy for council president. Um, I, you know, would love to just put my opinion out there. I've worked very closely with Diane Shay for the last, um, year on council. And in this transition of myself moving from a council seat to a mayor's position um, and feel confident in her ability to lead in my absence when needed and be a support to the council with the years of experience in city government with the city Bellevue and now on council. Um, but of course, it's a council decision and I would open to discussion or nomination of.
I recommend her too.
Yeah.
And Diane's, you know, been around forever. And I've talked to her. Sorry, Diane. But, you know, and, you know, I thought about applying for this position myself. And I'm not in a position to leave. I can't, not here enough to do it. And I wanted to, to let her know that I'll help her, especially when you have your baby. And, you know, I help her do her job and all the above.
Is that a nomination?
Nomination.
Yeah. I take her second word. Okay. We have a nomination for Diane Shay from Sean Mahoney and a second from Tom Bergen. Um, you want a roll call vote? Yes, that, Amy, please.
Yes. Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, Diane. I look forward to working with the same and not more.
Appreciate it. I think we're gonna be busy.
Yeah, we are. Okay, so we're going to skip over our presentation for the ninth, our item number nine on the agenda. And we're gonna move right into new business. Let's get to my page. With that, we have a vacancy on our P and Z um, commission. And, um, so I would like to propose a candidate, um, Jenna La, she, we did see her on a run for city council this fall. Um, Jenna comes to us with quite a bit of city experience. Um, in particular, right now, um, her work is a zoning technician in a neighboring city in Blaine County. Um, she is local, uh, you know, been local for a while, lived in Bellevue, um, over four years and has been eager to get involved, um, kind of in a capacity that she can help her community. Um, and I saw this as, um, a right for her. So, um, I would love the consideration of a general advisor, um, to fill the vacancy we have on him and zoning commission.
Mayor, I will go ahead and move that we appoint, uh, general advisor, I'm sorry, um, to our planning and zoning commission.
Second.
I think that's a roll call vote. So I will go ahead and go do that. Uh, councilmember Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Item number one here, um, Shelley is with us on Zoom. Um, this is our discussion and consideration of resolution number twenty four oh three, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for payment processing services with Express Bill Pay. Um, Shelley gave some memo in here, um, kind of explaining her why, but I'll also allow Shelley to pop on if she wants to come and introduce a rule and if there are any questions, she'll be there if you're willing.
Yes, counsel, I'm here. I was trying to get to it in my, in my packet, but there's a lot of scrolling here. So, um, basically, the, the brief rundown is that everyone, anyone that I've talked to who is with Casell uses Express Bill Pay for receiving payments, um, to their cities because they integrate very well uh, with Casell and people love it. It works great. Um, the main, well, one, I guess, uh, I'm asking the council for approval for Express Bill Pay, but there's a decision to make in that, in that, um, whether we continue to absorb the fees, which are greatly reduced if we absorb them or pass them to our customers, which, um, you'll see in my memo is, is way more expensive and more comparable with what we have been paying, uh, absorbing the fees. And I think with Casell, we need to keep in mind that we are going to be bringing probably more customers into this payment avenue. So those fees are going to increase as we have the ability to bring these customers more um, automatic in their, in their bill pays. Because all of the, all of the bill pays that Maria processes right now manually in-house will be going through the payment system. So, um, that's kind of the rundown on it.
Shelley, my question on it was that I noticed, I didn't see, I know it's, um, so they'll even charge us if they set up an A C H on there, because that's the one thing I wasn't noticing, the way that you could just automatically set up. Was, was that in there? I just didn't. Yeah.
Every, every transaction that happens through a card or an e-check is charged.
Okay, so an e-check is considered A C H then?
No, there's a separate charge on the e-checks. And I'm still trying to scroll to get there.
Okay.
Oh, I also think Shelley, there are, what, there were four or five options that integrate with Casell, right? And the primary goal in this is to find the, the best choice for us in that, right? And you're, you're, the city, based on every, all the processing that we do now will be replaced with uh, Casell, this payment system, so that it's integrated with Casell, right?
Correct.
And, um, so did you find that, um, as well as, as people finding this to be the easiest to integrate and potentially to have additional external components that would be able to be integrated in other systems that we use? Did you find the pricing for this was the most competitive with the other options?
Frankly, I, I don't have specific pricing on others because I wasn't even able to find who else others were using. Everybody's using Express Bill Pay. The ones that I have talked to.
And is it necessary now to decide, um, whether this is going to be passed on, as you were noting, or if we were gonna try a model? Yes, it has to be decided now.
This is sorry to interject, but based on the discussion I had with Shelley, um when we set this up, we, we wanna basically decide. Um, if we are absorbing the visas we have done um or basically passing on the fees to. Uh, customers.
That, that's what, what at Mahoney's, we are not, we used to suck it up and you take the fees ourselves. Just everything's now is gonna carry whatever. We had to pass on the. The fees to the customer. This is, it can't do it otherwise. Also, you charge them extra money. This is a process of, of the, you know, the deal, the bill.
And as um Shelley pointed out in her memo, in case, just to make this you aware. Um, total transaction fees for fiscal year twenty-four um were thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. That the city absorbed. So it isn't a, a small number that we can.
Well, and I, I think maybe also just to differentiate, when you talk about absorbing versus passing on, there are different methodologies, right? I think you've seen what Jim's done at the DMV is he's made it very clear. He, they, it's priced differently. Based on what, what you're using. It doesn't, but when you use something like Eventbrite, you actually see the, the specific transaction amount. So is that what we're talking about now or really just that issue of, you know, all of, everything's gonna be more expensive this year? Because we're including transaction fees. Is that what we're trying to solve now?
To clarify, you're asking about the uh, the difference of presentation of the doll, of the dollar amount? Like, for example, you know, instead of it saying one thirty fifty-five for your bill, it would say uh one thirty-five oh five. Or does it say one thirty fifty-five and then breaking out a transaction fee? Is that what you're referring?
Well, I guess I'm mostly trying to clarify, are we trying to determine how we will present it to the customer or simply saying? We're passing on this, this expense has to be.
I think presentation isn't necessarily the discussion, if we are or if we aren't.
But, okay.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess my thoughts are with increases in water and sewer and then passing on additional fees. I don't know. I kinda wanna see another quote in comparison because I've lived in different cities and places where I can do an ACH form. And there's not a fee associated with that. Like, that's an automatic ACH. And then I wouldn't get charged for that. So it doesn't make sense like why, when I was looking through their details of how someone is charged. Okay, why isn't there an option to just set up ACH so I don't have to pay?
It's actually hidden. From, I did, that's what I'm trying to differentiate is when you look at Eventbrite, you'll see multiple fees, right?
Yes, yes.
But you'll look at maybe your DMV bill and it's just telling you, if you use this method, or if you use this manner of payment, this is what your, what the bill's gonna be. And so it's, it's built in. So sometimes depending on the payment, they'll actually, it'll cost them less if you chart, if you do H C. There's a, there's an averaging that happens and all that. So.
What do we do in Mahoney's? We pay cash?
And I pay cash when I come, Sean.
And that, we don't charge you more money, right? No, and you know, the problem now is that everybody, I'm old school. We used to use the cash. Okay, kids don't know what cash is. No, no, you know.
But the model's changed and so.
But yeah, someone's gotta pay for it.
Yep.
You know, I, we suck it up for number, number of years. And it was like four or five thousand dollars a month. We lost out on. That was my profit. You know, the same with the city. We have to, you know, we're gonna be using credit card, but it's gonna be, somebody gotta pay for it. It's not us.
But I think to Jessica's point, I, I think the cost should be, we should be properly pricing. But to your point on our major utilities, the water and sewer, there have been increases already. And people aren't a hundred percent sure what they're for. And so now it's, is this gonna be on top of that, right? Or is this something that now is going to, we can say, well, this year, that's what it's gonna cover. That increase of, you know, four point nine nine percent is going to uh include those, those fees. You know, Shelley, I mean, that's part of the math, right? Just trying to figure out. We, we are already collecting more money. So is part of that money gonna be um paid, is gonna pay the transaction fees? Is that a reasonable use of the recent increases?
Those are, those are actual water sewer rates. So those are not transaction fees. So these fees would be on top. I would like to point out that this relationship with express bill pay, we get real time sync of payments. Like, when it's made, it, it goes automatically into the account. There is no manual entry. Payments automatically upload into Casell. That's how seamless this whole system is. Customers can go paperless, totally paperless. Um, I mean, they can get all their bills e-billed. Uh, it's just, and they do have customer support all the time. So if anyone ever has any issues. They can reach uh, uh, express bill pay. It's.
And then I, if someone's paying cash, do they get charged these transaction fees?
No.
No.
We probably wanna put somewhere in this program that you will be charged a transaction. If you choose to use a credit card or a check.
And I think that's what you're not saying at the DMV. If you pay with a check, it's a dollar fifty fee. If you pay with a credit card, it's a four percent fee. If you pay with cash.
Yeah.
Um, but there's still a process of getting the DMV no matter what. And as far as. These rates affecting our base bill rates, um, we're gonna read, we're gonna go like. And move into doing a proper rate study here this summer, but or this, this spring into the summer. But the, the four point nine percent is covering our cost of. Prices of type going up, the cost of employees going up. It's just the all, the, the inflation that we can't pass on because just like everybody else in the country. Our water, wastewater team is dealing with inflation. Everything, everybody to keep everything maintained. So this would be taking away from potential services if you were just gonna roll it back into. Take that off the, the, the base fee that we currently pay.
And, and so, point taken. And I guess really, I, I could not agree more with Shelley that these are the types of systems that you want to implement. And I just feel like the conversation now is how you're gonna implement it. And when you talk about these fees and Shelley advocates and, and is spot on, these monies go how much more quickly into the account? And then the analysis is if you're in a high yield savings for some of that money, is there any offset there at least in the transition period? So I don't know. That's all I was trying to say. I think this is a great choice and that it should be embraced. I didn't think that we had enough information, as Jessica noted, to determine exactly how it would um be implemented. At for the feeds on the various things quite yet, but that we would wanna move in this direction. Does that make sense?
Suzanne?
Yes.
Casell and express bill pay work directly together to get it all implemented. And I'm pretty positive that the fees show as a separate line item. When someone is checking out using a card, it, it shows.
And I'm gonna hop in. Shelley, just from experience, I own a business up in Ketchum. And when I'm paying my lot taxes. Um, express bill pay is integrated with their Casell system. So I, I fill out all the information. I fill the data. And then it populates what I owe and if I'm using ACH or a credit card basically to pay. Um, in my experience, I did not pay any transaction fees with ACH. That would be something that I hope um Shelley could confirm and clarify. I do pay fees when I use a credit card. And it is shown as a separate line item. So that is my individual business experience with express bill pay in a city within our county.
Um, and the only other thing is express can change fees anytime within thirty days notice. So they can just up the fees however much they want, whenever they want without, you know. Like, are, so does that then go to Shelley once that happens? And then.
It would be on Shelley. Service providers for last serve compared.
But, but there aren't a lot there, Shelley. And I, I think you sent me the information, Shelley, but there are only four or five. And, and they all have a very, very similar.
And we're at, we're at the mercy of them. They can all change their fees anytime.
Yeah, it's very similar. They're the same. Just, just to clarify. So you're really saying, do you want this um efficiency?
That's why you wanna pay cash.
Right, that's right.
It comes out good. You know, in today's world, I'm serious. You know, I, for example, when we first opened, we had thirty percent credit cards. Now it's ninety-nine. So you, who do you, what are you, what are you passing on? You pass it on the, you know, the customer. You know, in these days, even though you blink, they don't. You know, it's one, well, okay, this is credit cards. That's what it is, you know?
Well, and I guess I'm also referencing, you know, in many applications, you can turn off the visibility into the fees. So when somebody buys their ticket, it looks like it's an eighty dollar ticket. It was a sixty dollar ticket. But then there are all the fees and it became an eighty dollars. So that was the other thing I was just trying to differentiate.
I think my opinion on that would be uh, just to be more transparent with our consumers of what fees they're actually paying instead of hiding them. Because then that would put into question our base rate. So I think making sure the base rates are outlined and then what we would call a service fee. You know, using credit cards are convenience at this, at this time. Um, I just wanna see if Diane, Tammy or Tom have any, need to weigh in. Tammy, please, go ahead.
If, is it possible that we could. Agree to um pay it? But yet include it so that it's a lesser rate, but include it in on our. On the bill because it's a separate fee paid to a, a separate organization. Could we include it in on the bill so that then um, so that the city does not lose? That's actually a lot of money to think of. That's about over a thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's, I don't even know if we give that much to the library or to our parks department. And so maybe if we weren't paying that out, we could, you know, look at. Where else we could be using that, that money if we weren't directly paying it out to service fees? But is it possible that we could add it on to the bill if we agreed to pay it at that lesser rate? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
No. No. Um, I'll try and kind of, it looks like Shelley, do you have your hand raised in response?
I do. I do. I believe in order to do that, Tammy, we would have to create. Um, of, a fee, an administrative fee that we charge to our customers. So it's not, it, it's not really then associated with card fees that they're used to paying. But we would be charging them an administrative fee to cover our card expense. And that would, that would necessitate a new fee from the city.
And then to jump, to jump in on that, Shelley, it would also then, from a clerk billing standpoint. She would then have to understand who's paying credit card, who's paying cash, who's paying that. So it's, it's, it would add a little, it would add more. Administrative uh mess probably on that clerk billing side.
Correct.
Bill pay and Casell is, works so well together. You don't have to do that stuff. I mean, can you imagine doing? Thousand, you know, bills and it has to adjust everyone and take a, we have a full time employee just doing that.
Do, do we have any uh breakdown as, as um Alderman Mahoney? Um, about how, how, how many people pay with credit card? How many people, I mean, it seems like the staff really wouldn't wanna deal with cash. Now, I don't know whether we'll see people, oh, I'm not paying the four percent fee. Here's my cash and we'll pay that way. I, I don't know whether we'll see an increase in that, but do we have any sense of currently how many people pay one way or another? And kind of what the result would be. And then I guess the other thing, I have a sense that uh express bill pay is more efficient than maybe less costly. And so would the total transaction fees for fiscal year twenty-five be significantly less than thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four?
Yeah, it may not. I mean, do we, do we?
Well.
Have any sense of how much?
Right now, we're paying roughly, where is it in my memo? Four oh four for every customer who makes a hundred and thirty dollar fifty-five cent payment. We're paying four dollars and four cents for every, every one of those payments. Um, with express, if we absorbed it, that cost would go down to dollar eighty-five. Plus the express bill pay of point seventy-four cents. Um, or wait a minute, a dollar, let's see. It'd be two fifty-nine compared to four oh four. So we would be reducing our cost. But uh, what I'm saying is I think we need to plan on increasing the customer base. That will eventually come onto the system using it.
Do we have any, uh, Shelley, on the percentage of our cus, our, our water and sewer customers who are paying in cash?
Um, I could not tell you cash. I mean, we could go, we roughly pay eleven, twelve hundred a month in merchant fees. So, you know, I mean, kind of divide that out as to how many customers. Um, customers who are currently paying through our website is very, very, very minimal. And those are the ones that, you know, um, will probably hopefully be increasing due to. Um, new website and all that. Uh, just ease for the customers with the new system, I think we'll see an increase. Is there something I missed?
No, we're just a little hold. Diane?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm, I'm just over here coughing and blowing my nose. Um, I, you know, I think we've talked a lot this year about. Um, just to use the part fee as an example, how many times we've waived that fee? And in a city where we are uh strapped for money, it seems like always. I question uh how good of a decision that is to absorb it. Um, also understanding, you know, we've, we've done a rate increase this year and so. Um, you know, passing this on to our citizens is not gonna be a very popular. Uh, a pop, popular idea.
Um, I guess my only other question is like, right now, somebody doesn't pay their water bill in the process around that, like the. And continues not to pay their water bill, will this make it. Efficient in record to then collect those monies then, like that's a process now? In collecting money for people that don't pay, or is their water just?
There are late fees.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's been an element of leniency on. Collection of late fees, but I think they will.
So typically, they uh, you know, thirty days after ninety days, they will give a, a notice of um delinquency. And then they'll shut them off after, within three days.
Okay.
And uh, until they pay fifty percent and set up a um. Catch-up cycle.
And that's done through Maria now, correct? So this could be done online or would that still be an in-person thing?
For collection of last two fees, I would imagine.
It would still be, we'd be setting up delinquency notices, following up with shut-off notices. And they have like twenty-four, forty-eight hours from the county to shut off those, when we actually.
So I would imagine it could be something where they come in and pay cash or they get a sent a link to this and they can take care of it via credit card and. Get it taken care of. So, I mean.
You know, unfortunately, today's world, I'm sure that our customers are pissed off because, oh, why are we paying this? Two fifty or whatever it is, you know, times are changing. Like I said, thirty or twenty years ago, I was paying thirty-three, you know, thirty percent of credit card fees. Now it's a hundred, basically. You know, we had to do, you have to do it. It's not, not a discussion, I think. No, I'm sorry. It's what happens. We've become a big cat. We take cash. You know, it, it is what it is. I'm sorry.
And I, I just think, understanding that there's, Shelley's approaching us about an integrated payment processing system for Casell.
Yeah.
We currently use something that's not integrated, that Tyler technology, that sad little thing that happens out in that corner, right? So there's already a system that the city uses and there's no bang for the buck. There's not any, but this is an opportunity. I think the synergies you get through a system like this, um, uh, it, it just is how. uh, it, it, it just is how it, it's happening. We're also seeing it that this is a common practice in terms of charging, everybody is charging. But I also think part of what we'll try to do is, is as it's presented, we'll make it as palatable as possible. But I, I don't think you know, we're making a lot of advances in terms of operations and things, and this is something that is, that is standard, standard issue. And the only way to work around these things is, you know, can you do slightly better with fees and things like this? Yes, but not in big systems like this and not without custom development. And the, I mean, fees aren't even that great.
And employee costs.
Yeah, so.
Can't imagine how huge it is.
So that, that's where I think the, just you're talking about, and, um, there are a couple of different aspects of it, but fundamentally, this replaces at the very least Tyler technology.
It also replaces our Intuit QuickBooks, which is the one that we're paying the four oh four to.
Right, okay, so they, right. And I think both of those things are appropriate to replace with with this particular solution, specifically because of the integration and because of the additional features, uh, that it offers.
Yeah.
And we, right, because.
Yeah, we're getting to the point, I was just trying to clarify, we have two resolutions in front of us, and I'm trying to clarify which one um, absorbs and which one passes on the fees. So I just wanted to, sorry to be flippant while you were talking. Okay, so, um.
Option one absorbs.
Yeah.
Option two passes it along.
Um, Amy, could you clarify for me? We've got two resolutions. We have a twenty-four oh three, which would absorb, and then I don't have a resolution number for, uh, the one that would pass on fees. Would it be?
It would also be twenty-four oh three, so, um, yeah, either one, thank you.
Either one. So, that, you know, the first option here on paper as a resolution to read, um, or, or second option to pass on the fees. So I think it's, yeah, a good time to put something forward and make a decision.
Uh, maybe the only comment I would add, um, would be prior to voting on a reservation. I completely agree about the transparency with this. I mean, the timing is kind of poor, honestly, with the new rate increase. And here we are with this now as well. Um, but, so if, and, and Express Pay seems like the system to adopt, and if we do pass this on rather than, you know, absorbing this in the future, it'd be very straightforward. You know, here's the cost. If, if in fact we're gonna charge for a check, and that's gonna be the cost for a check, we should be very clear with everyone about those things. I think that um, maybe the bill in general could use a little more clarity, and if clarity regarding this is added, that would be an additional improvement.
I think to just kind of comment on that, I think with moving to Cassell as our new building system as well, um, Shelley, correctly if I'm wrong, but I think there is, um, an opportunity to kind of present the information differently than our, our current QuickBooks bill are presenting information. So, I'm in agreeance that it, it could use a little work on, um, presentation of information, clarification of fees, and then, um, you know, we'll, we'll make it very clear where these fees are coming from. Um, it's definitely something we could talk about in the newsletter, um, and something that could, could go out to the public explaining the lie and, um, how it will show up on their bills. I'm in agreeance.
Yes, you, you've got it, yeah.
He should need some questions.
Yeah.
Great. Um, I move to approve option two to pass to the customer, resolution number twenty-four oh three, authorizing the mayor to sign a service order for ClearGov software. My gosh.
It's on the cover page for it, I.
Thank you. Sorry, I was going through what was in, uh, okay.
Or this, this.
Hey. Thank you. Yeah, I was there, back and forth, okay. I move to approve that's a new spending twenty-four oh three of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, to approve and authorize America's planning agreement with express bill pay for payment processing monthly maintenance and support fee of a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per month and the purchase of USB card reader in amount of eighty-five dollars plus card processing fees.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Another technology discussion, these are, um, new business item C. Um, and this is something I'd love to present to you all, um. I have been doing research on ClearGov, uh, ever since I took a, uh, city tour and ended up in Sandpoint, Idaho with um, other city representatives from around the state, from the resort city coalition. Um, I was really impressed by Sandpoint, Idaho in particular. Um, they had uh, kind of amazing, you know, part of their website that had a transparency hub to it that had um, beautiful kind of data reporting about their financials and one of the most impressive things to me was, um, project management tools. They had um, sort of water, you know, big projects they were working on, they had parks projects, um. And what I found out is the, the program they were using was called ClearGov, and, uh, what it allowed them to do was pretty high-level data budget, um, and kind of priority tracking on the backend, which then allowed them to push to the front end, to the customers on their website, uh, information about financials, projects, budgeting, um. Where I, where I see the value in this, there's, there's many layers of value for ClearGov, in my opinion. Um, but as we're progressing in our water project, um, and as we have had you know, a lot of light shed on our sewer, um, sewer facilities. Um, it's an opportunity for us to utilize, you know, within the Public Works Department, um, pro, this project management tool on the backend, which would then timeline it out and kind of give you progress markers on the front end for the customers. You get a lot of questions of what's going on, what's happening, where are you? Um, while we, we hope that people, you know, read the agendas or here our department had updates, um, this would be a bit more of a snapshot opportunity for people to go onto the website, track a project, look at it, um, get an understanding of the scope of the project. So very clear descriptions of the project, a breakdown of the budget with graphs, charts that allow them, uh, you know, allow people to see how much of the budget is being allocated to what portions of the project. Um, timeline tracking, so we can see the expectations and where we are, and then a project tracking bar where you could see, you know, where we've projected to be and where we actually are. Um, so that is part of, you know, our city moving in a a, a positive, transparent direction, providing, uh, information to our community members. Um, but also realizing it's a very powerful tool on the backend to give our staff the ability to, um, manage, you know, their budgets on projects within there. Um, kind of create work plans and then, uh, divvy, you know, divvy out tasks from these work plans. Um, attach purchase orders and/or bids that you're receiving on a project to the certain project, and then, uh, once, you know, that's been paid or approved, treasurer oversight on that as well, so, um, it, it has a lot to do with operational integrity and accountability. Um, it's a very sustainable, positive operating infrastructure once it's onboarded. Um, it helps with government, you know, city government decision-making, and then it helps you know, with resident participation and oversight. So those are kind of the, the top line things I wanted to point out, um. In discussing these opportunities with ClearGov, since we are kind of almost, you know, nearing halfway through the fiscal year, um, we've negotiated basically a, a, a discounted rate to finish out the fiscal year. Um, there'd be onboarding fees, like any technology has. Um, so that would be, um, working with different departments to do training and onboarding. Um, one positive thing is we just talked about Cassell, it completely integrates with Cassell software. So as we get Cassell online, um, Shelley's done a lot of that groundwork, getting Cassell operational and doing all the data entry from one system to Cassell. Um, so we have a nice leg up on now getting Cassell integrated into ClearGov. Um, so that'd be an onboarding fee and then, um, the basically a fifty-five-hundred dollar payment for the rest of the fiscal year. Um, to, to use this technology. My thoughts there is, that gives us an opportunity before we go into the next budgeting season to deem if it's working for us, if it's giving us the output that we've desired. Um, and then we can put it in the budget to continue it again for an entire fiscal year. So it's an opportunity for us to implement, um, kind of onboard with it, utilize it. Um, see if there's citizen buying on the front end, um, without committing to an entire year's payment that would stop us halfway in the fiscal year. So, um, this is something I have researched and then also, um, Alderman, Elderwoman Council, uh, Reed, sorry, has, uh, looked into for us as well, so happy to have a discussion with it, field any questions? Um, kind of talk through it more. There was a presentation that was included in your packet and then a, um, breakdown of the service fees as well, um, to kind of clarify. If you go through this. If there's any questions.
The, on page six of the material. There it goes, it has that breakdown of costs and, and then a set of discount as well as the bundle discount. Um, those are not the fee, that's the partial year reductions you're talking about.
The partial year is fifty percent of that, so that's what a full year would be. Um, so what you're referring to, yes, is it'd be, the bundle comes with, um, budgeting, clear plans, digital financial reporting, and this transparency, those are the modules that are included um, in the, in the bundle, and there's a discount, a bundle discount fourteen thousand four hundred when you bundle it all together, so that's the yearly cost, and we're gonna pay fifty percent of that for the rest of, basically, for the rest of our fiscal year.
Discount is in addition to the discounts.
Is in addition, yes, thank you for that. It's in addition to the already, um, large bundle discount for putting multiple modules together.
And then how, how long, um, my experience with other types of, um, software packages like this, there was sort of timeframe, oh, we can get set it up within four months or six months, do they have some sense of, yeah, we can have you sort of functional in thirty days, or?
I think the, the average window is sixty days, uh, with the, um, already kind of onboarded process with Cassell. Um, and then the intention would be to, um, with there being four modules, um, kind of stagger the onboarding. So while the operational budgeting and financial reporting is being onboarded in, um, in collaboration, we would be working on clear plans, and this is something that Councilwoman Reed would probably, you know, partner with taking on, um, with her background in kind of technologies and all of that, um, kind of helping and collaborating to get this going so that we don't have as much of an onboarding delay as we've experienced with other technologies that we've brought into the city.
So when we do the data onboarding, which is our Cassell uploads, um, that can tell that, that has a longer process, that involves us printing out or publishing uh, a certain sets of reports that then, that they've been mapped for us. But that is the underlying of the tools like the transparency tools, but as, as the mayor was pointing out, some of the other ones, such as clear plans, that's day one. And those are, clear plans is, is the method that we are hoping will provide um, all of our departments with the ability for better project management and project tracking. So you'll finally have a beautiful home for your aspirations for the new firehouse and all that kind of stuff, though, becomes, um, centralized um, through some of these other more immediate. And then as the data is, as the financial data is onboarded, all of that is fed into the budgeting tools that are, um, available for the department and for CPIs and, and all of that. Um, so it's, it's really about providing the city with, uh, an operational infrastructure that's sustainable and that, um, facilitates the, the staff in what they're trying to accomplish and helps our departments develop their budgets and have greater accountability in what they can see that they're working on and can share, so. Um, it's, it's kind of a robust suite in that.
Talking about moving from a bunch of Excel spreadsheets, where it gets lost, you know, into, uh, more of a hub system in backend of our website, that, um, you know, the amount of spreadsheets I've seen to kind of group work and track and all that, it's just we could be using much better technology systems and end up with a better result in terms of project management.
Everything in one place.
Tammy, I see your hand up. I apologize if you've been waiting.
No, you're fine. I just was gonna ask, how was, like, where does this come out in the budget? Is it s- spread? Does it come out of part of water and sewer? Does it come out part of uh, all administration? How do you see it being allocated in, in expenses?
Um, my, yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for asking. Um, in reviewing this with Shelley, while I think it, it, it will benefit multiple departments. The intention right at the, at the forefront of onboarding will be for use within the Water and Sewer Department to specifically um, work on the water project and, um, the sewer, getting the sewer plant back online. So that would be the initial, um, budget allocation and use for the software, and then as we progress into the budgeting season, if we feel, uh, we want to continue with the software, um, we could do a, a better percentage allocation of, you know, if it needs to be coming from different sources. If you're, yeah, I, if you feel that, yeah. Diane, did you have any kind of discussion points on this?
Yes, um, I would just like to add, I think, I think it's a great idea. Um, I think it, it, uh, it speaks to some of the accountability issues that we've been talking about for several months, and, uh, I, I, I would support this.
I, I just wanted to add too, I, I think it's hard when everybody's been doing things in ways that have been done in the past and struggling to, but ultimately, I, this, a tool like this brings significant resources to all of, um, the staff and the departments and makes their work more visible um, as well, and gives them, uh, additional tools that is, makes it easier to answer questions. The Transparency Center is meant directly, um, specifically for the residents to have, see all the work that's being done by by the folks behind the scenes, just as a natural publication of the work. It's, it's not a separate effort or what have you. It takes everything that um, that we're doing at City Hall and in the departments and, um, gives us the ability to publish whatever we need to the residents very easily and consistently and in real time. Um, so it also meets that, that, as we were talking about, a little bit of the, the crisis of trust that's been developing with folks, and, um, so hopefully, I mean, that's the intention, is to strengthen all the aspects.
I, I would just like to add or, or comment on something else, that something, an investment like this, it, I would invite us to consider not just one half of a year, but because, if we're gonna take on all the different bundles, that, that we look at it being for a full cycle so that we do maybe plan on looking at this, that unless it's a total faux pas, that we do plan to budget for this for the next year so that we can see it in full, in full, you know, course, in a full course as it runs itself using all of the components of it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Budget, because I understand what you're saying, Tammy, is we would extend the budget allocation beyond this fiscal year. For any budget, as I understand what you're saying, Tammy, is we would extend the budget allocation beyond this fiscal year? Is that?
You can't do that, I'm I'm saying when we are considering this, that we don't consider it just like, oh, for the next six months. That we really look at if we're going to put the investment of time over the next couple of months to onboard it, that we really keep in mind. That it could be better served as we look at then the budgets for the next year that we do can, you know, have this be a priority as well to continue to budget for.
Let me pose, thank you for that, Tammy, let me pose a question to Shelley, Shelley, um. Just looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, I know you you and I ran the numbers, is, are you more in favor of, you know, just doing this fifty five hundred with onboarding? Or are you in support of just going for the whole, let's commit to a year? Do you have an opinion on that from a budget standpoint?
Well, yeah, from a budget standpoint, I vote for the fifty percent, so that we can take this little bit of time. And when we get to our budget season, figure out if we think that this is something that we want to continue with. I think this is a rare opportunity, um and they're willing to discount it fifty percent for us to basically try it out here for the next six months or so. And um and I think we'll know within that time period whether it's something we want to go forward with and then we can budget it properly. Because it's not budgeted, so I'm gonna have to amend budget or or do something, you know, for the funds. So my vote is take the discounted six months.
Now, I think the reason, other reason we liked the deal was, we don't have a great history of implementing things. Casell has been on the books for years, right, these times, so it was a little bit of a of an out. If we failed to implement over this next six months, that we hadn't locked ourselves in anything. But the goal is certainly to persevere, but we left ourselves an out, which hasn't always been there.
Yeah, the fact that, because we did kind of ask what all discounts were possible and worked, it worked what we could for discounts. And when this came up, it felt um, it felt a little softer to take on in terms of uh budget and, you know, onboarding. So um per our treasurer's recommendation, I say, if we're considering this, let's consider the fifty five hundred with the two thousand onboarding. And then um, you know, that's not a reoccurring payment, it's a one-time payment, so if we do then proceed for another fiscal year, we will only for, you know, the eleven thousand, which we can properly budget for.
Thank you for your motion.
Don't, I will take the motion.
I move for resolution number twenty four oh four, authorizing mayor to sign a service order for ClearGov software.
Second. Roll calling.
Right, uh-huh, sorry. Council member Reed.
Yes.
Council member Obenoff.
Yeah.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council president Shay.
Yes.
Council member Davis. Yeah. Thank you.
But. But.
Council member Mahoney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, we're moving on to um agenda item ten D. This is a request for funds um coming from the public works department. Um this is in this, it basically in response to. Some of the emissions and um happening down at the sewer plant. And I will let our Chris Johnson, public works director, kind of take us. Little explanation of the products we're looking at and the why.
So currently we have uh our chlorine gas. Let me call it the plant, the 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 house, the chlorine house, the treatment house. It has a chlorine sensor that's built an alarm that does not blend a visual alarm if there's a excess of chlorine inside that. Um these others with the. Things about odor, it's trying to be saying that we are trying to do something, hydrogen sulfide, toxic and high concentration. And usually, given its density, will go into low confined places where we see it the most trouble. Um ammonia is another one that while not. Not that toxic, it's a concentration that does have an odor and it just um provides some. I don't know, some feel good and saying that we are trying to monitor it and identify what's going on. We want to have all the alarms and uh outside sensors around the plant, so if there are uh. Higher odors that we are at least addressing, then you think ones that can be most toxic. As far as personnel, we do have personal hydrogen sulfide monitors that we do go into confined spaces, um. We can drop in, get a get a test in there and then blow them out if we need to. Um this is more for a public uh health and welfare and just trying to be good neighbors as we continue to um work on our treatment facility on there. Uh the biggest issue is five and a half miles of eight inch pipe, um hydrogen, hydrogen sulfide. Um it just condenses and it becomes, that could be a problem and they're gonna get an odor, but it's just a rotten egg, much like your. Uh natural gas, if you have a natural gas leak, you're still on the same thing. So we're just trying to have a secondary alarm down there to protect the neighboring citizens and um just protect uh public health and welfare down.
Just to follow up on what. Mr. Johnson said, um basically what when. He heard about it, I heard about it, there's um, you know, we just think it's important to have data on the hydrogen sulfide and the ammonia level. So um that we are monitoring um and making sure that we're staying below a toxic level. And while it is a nuisance, we can, you know, inform to our citizens in that area that um we have, we have the data to basically. Confirm um the lack of toxicity that we believe already exists.
How does the, how do these things get monitored, they come back into a main system, do they plug into something or they're, you have to go and look at them, I'll just carry it.
Right now, uh we don't have a system up running down there, so it will be um data monitoring of the levels. But uh once we get a data back online and get our internet backup down there, we can plug it into our data and have real time data.
So but from, I understand this would be a great benefit to then explain to the residents in this area, as I heard there's many complaints about the odor.
And.
For years.
We are just a target, um you know, there's two days last week I was down there and I get a call at eight o'clock at night about how awful this smells down there. I was down there for forty eight hours, four to six hours between the two days, there wasn't a smell. Um so we are going to continue to research, there are plenty of other septic systems down there, so somebody could have a family septic, and we can get them blamed for it. So this gives us some data that says, hey, our senses are saying that it's not toxic, it may be the odor and unpleasant, but. We're not putting public health and safety at risk.
Yeah.
Do we know what this or is uh someone use?
Yeah, it's a, it's a funds request from the public works department, so we would just need to move to approve the request for funds.
I'll move to the first three requests for funds.
Council member Mahoney.
Yes.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Council member Obenoff.
Yeah.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council member Davis. Council president Shay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, this is item number eleven, um as I spoke to at the beginning of the meeting. Um you know, we have our community development director Brian Pepper out sick, um and with a little bit of staff unwellness. Um I don't feel that we uh were able to gather public comments and all the necessary steps to. Running a proper public hearing on 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 time for this evening. So um in process, I will go ahead and um I'm going to open the public hearing as as needed to be. But I would ask um council to make a motion uh to continue the hearing to date certain of January twenty seven, our next city council meeting, so.
Mayor, I I will move to uh continue this public hearing on the record to a date certain of January twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Please to open it.
Thank you, and then um all in favor to move.
Aye.
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 Mayor, I have a question procedurally, so we've opened the public hearing. Um and maybe this is for Rick, um but we have to close the public hearing, correct?
We haven't even had the staff report yet, Diane, so.
Right.
I it it just, we just uh. Took up the agenda item.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Just really quick, Diane and Tammy on that, all in favor, did I get in? Yes, or a aye from you guys?
Aye.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Well, that will conclude tonight's agenda, so at this time I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
So, while you guys are all here, are you still planning on doing the um community planning meeting, like everybody said, or?
Um, yes, we only are are um. Our staff number will be able to run this treaty planning meeting and if Diane.